Welcome, everyone, to the September 14th, 2021 City Council meeting and call this council meeting to order. I'll call on Claudia to do a roll call of the council.
Present.
Counselor Minky. Counselor Garvin. Counselor Peralta.
Here.
Counselor Chinowh.
Present.
Council President Drupkin.
Here.
And Mayor Hill.
Here. Thank you, Claudia, and again, we welcome everyone to City Council this evening. I'm just going to reach out. Remy, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening?
I'll go ahead and lead us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for participating. Before we go into our next item of business, I just wanted to remind councilors that today we received an email from Jennifer with two attachments. The first attachment is the work that staff has done on core services to focus on our expenditures. And next Wednesday evening at our work session, we're going to take the opportunity to review the two documents. The other document was the study of resource options for sustainable city services. The Budget Committee has received this information. But I just would like the budget document itself. The budget document, as you know, is, you know, really thick and there's a lot of reading. These documents aren't that thick, but they're close probably to 100 pages. And I would suggest that you take a look at those and utilize your time appropriately to look at the core services and then the follow-up on the resource options that we've been talking about. The more prepared that we come to next Wednesday's work, our work meeting, the more productive we're going to be. That will be a two-hour meeting and one hour on core services and one hour on resource options. So again, I just share that with the council and the Budget Committee, just to be prepared on that. Thank you. Our next area is going to be an invitation for community members to make comment, and anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. We will limit this to three minutes, and you'll have an opportunity to speak. We will, at this point, I don't see anyone at the Civic Hall. We're primarily, we've curtailed meeting there, given the COVID situation. But I'll turn it over to Claudia to see if we have anyone online that would like to participate. Please raise your hand in the Zoom function. I will also, if there's anyone on the phone, will give opportunity to you on the phone. Please state your name, your address for the record, and again, we will give you three minutes to address the council. So Claudia, I'll turn it over to you. Do we have anyone that would like to address us this evening?
Mayor and council, no one has signed up to address the council tonight.
Thank you, Claudia. Okay. This evening, we have a presentation, and it's the five-year review of Affordable Housing System Development Charges, SDCs, exceptions. And so at this point, we have a staff memo that was giving to us with a lot of information, but we'll turn the time over to Heather to make that presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and councilors. I'm going to share my screen. I did put the presentation together early. I had a special request from Counselor Chinowh to try to get my presentations out earlier than I have in the past. But the irony of it is now I haven't looked at it in a week and I'm reminding myself what's in it as we go. Chris, just so you notice, I did do it this one time.
We'll see how it goes and make a recommendation for you later, right?
Thank you so much for listening.
So in our code, we, in our McMinnville municipal code in Title III, we have a section on SDC exemptions. And in that, we have a place where we say qualifying affordable housing projects receive an exception from transportation and wastewater SDCs. So that means they're not paying them. And they also get 50% permit fee reductions from both building and planning permit fees. Qualifying housing projects are those that, for serving households making 80% area median income or less, based on HUD standards, and homeless shelters. The house needs to be retained for affordable housing for 10 years, and the way we do that is we actually put a certificate of exception. We record that on the deed, the property deed, that says that this house got this exemption, and we give the amount on it for affordable housing. And if there is a real estate transaction that takes place, that will be triggered, and we'll have a discussion about who it's going to next. So this was originally adopted in 2018, I think, and it states right in the code that we need to evaluate it in 2021. So this was one of those programs where we said, let's see how it's, if it's, one, effective, and, two, how it's impacting our SDC collections to support this program. Are we creating stress on another program? So the code says that the McMinnville City Council will evaluate, and then they'll decide whether or not to continue to move forward with the exceptions or to sunset the program. So SDCs in McMinnville, there's always a lot of discussion about this. This is actually something that was, I think, in the documents that Jennifer sent out to you that you just referenced, Mayor. But this shows that in McMinnville, our SDC collection, which in 2021 is about 8,800 per household, per housing unit, is very low in terms of the overall scheme of SDCs throughout the valley. In fact, this is a 2021 number, and we're looking at 19, 20 numbers here, since they've all probably incrementally gone up. What we collect in McMinnville are SDCs for transportation sewer and parks, and this shows the 2020, 2021 collections for a individual housing unit. So it's a total of $8,857. Because we exempt transportation and sewer from affordable housing projects, they still pay the parks SDC, but they're getting an exception on their housing unit of about $6,240. So that's money they do not have to pay to build the housing unit in McMinnville. And that is what we put on that certificate of exemption that we record on the property. So the ordinance first passed in 2016. We've been doing it for five years officially. Prior to the ordinance adopting the program, the city actually practiced this same program informally with nonprofits in the community that were building affordable housing. So we were already providing it. It was an internal policy, it just wasn't codified. And in 2016, we said, let's codify it and let's make it wide open. So rather than just providing the program to nonprofits building housing, really what we're trying to achieve is the outcome, which is building affordable housing units, much like we just heard. And so anybody who's building them can take advantage of this program, and we wanted to see how the private market would respond to it. So in the informal program from 1996 to 2016, we had 36 projects that participated in it. The two most active years were 2007 and 2008, when six permits were issued each year. That resulted in those years of about 27,400,000, 27.400,000 in one year and 27,000 and a little bit more in the other year, so respectively. Since 2017, after we formalized this program, there have been 40 projects. So in a 20-year time period, we had 36. In the last five years, we've had 40 projects, and that equated to $230,000 in exceptions or grants that we have provided to affordable housing projects in the form of SDC exemptions. So that's how much money the city has been able to provide to help affordable housing projects move forward in McMinnville over the last five years through this program. There's two additional projects on the horizon. So we've been working on affordable housing projects with some of our larger providers for the last several years to try to really make meaningful impact on providing that type of housing product in our community. And one is with Operation Generation, one is called Operation Generation, which will have approximately 23 units. That number's still moving around a little bit as they design it. That's being built by one of our churches in our downtown area. And based on this program, they would receive $143,500 in exemptions, or grant for that amount of money from the city. And then we have the Stratus Village project, which you have seen at City Council in a land use decision, which is being built by the housing authority, and that's 200 units, and they would be eligible for 1.248, so $1,248,000 in SDC exemptions. And they can use that exemption as part of their competitive grant applications to the state to show that the city is working with them to try to bring this project to bear. And the mayor has written some letters in to that effect. So in terms of recent SDC collections in McMinnville, how has this project been impactful to them? This is also something that came out of what the Finance Director sent out to you, but these are the SDC actuals for the city of McMinnville over the last five years, fiscal years. And so you can see, we've had some, you know, significant bumps in construction in FY19 and FY20. When I look at this to see what it means for affordable housing projects, I'm really looking across the board at what's happening under the parks SDCs, because that will show us what's happening in the housing market, because we only collect parks SDCs on housing, to see if, you know, if those years of 2019, 20 was really impacted by housing development or were there other things going on, such as commercial development or industrial development, which are also paying industrial, transportation, and wastewater capital SDCs. So you can see some of these significant bumps were actually, had some things going on in the commercial world in terms of projects that were being built that were really jumping up the wastewater pieces and the transportation pieces. But we are still collecting healthy parks as well, so that's showing that we're having some residential development. But the funds seem to be healthy. Now, with that said, the Affordable Housing Committee did review this program. They discussed it at their July 25th meeting this year, and they had four different paths in front of them to consider. And one would be to continue the program, so they're making a recommendation to you as the City Council. Continue the program and analyze revenue shortfalls in public facility updates that are currently underway. So we're currently updating our transportation system plan and our wastewater conveyance plan and our parks master plan. And in those, we're going to have, we're going to update our capital improvement projects list. We're also going to update our SDC methodology, and we can, through that process, identify more qualitatively and also quantify how this program has impacted the ability to build those capital improvement projects and how it would impact it moving forward as well. And so that was one of the things on the list for the Affordable Housing Committee to consider. Another one was to put a cap on the program. If you recall, when we first put this program together in the code, we said that, I forgot what the number was, but we wouldn't issue more than X number of SDC exemptions. And then we had a revisit on that and talked about how one large project could come in and take out all of that exception allowance, and we didn't want that to occur. We wanted to be able to make it available to anybody who was building the units, because the units were needed in our communities, we removed the cap. We could put another evaluation here on the program. We could say, you know, let's keep moving this forward and decide to evaluate after some of these larger projects move through the system in 2025 or something. Or we can make a recommendation to discontinue the program altogether. So the recommendation to the City Council from the Affordable Housing Committee was continue the program, but analyze the revenue shortfalls as you do this public facility planning that's going on right now, so that we can understand it a little better in terms of what the exemptions mean and what they're doing in terms of capture of SDC revenue and the impact to the capital improvement projects. When I visited with Mike Viset before he left, I visited with him about this program and what his thoughts were, and his thoughts were the same as they were when we first put this program together, which is the city has consciously made a choice not to collect SDCs at a full cost recovery right now. And so by having this program exempt affordable housing projects, which is a needed product in our community, isn't overall changing that methodology for the city, because the city had already created that value system of not having full cost recovery. So he felt it was a program worth moving forward with as well. But he also suggested that we analyze it in our public facility updates. So we're meant to bring this to you to talk about the evaluation and that process, and you can provide direction to us in terms of how, if you want to move forward with it, if you want to put a cap on it, how you want to proceed.
Thank you for the presentation, Heather. Let's open it up to councilors to ask questions and any other possible discussion items the council might have around this. Go ahead, Kelly.
I just wanted to point out, can't see myself, but that I believe this was a unanimous vote, that we felt that this should continue and that, you know, do the analysis as we go through it. But it was having such incredible results that we thought it was well worth it, particularly in view of the overall community attitude towards SDCs in general. So I just kind of wanted you to know that this was approved, I believe unanimously, as I recall, by the Affordable Housing Committee.
And just to remind everybody that we have quite a representation on the Affordable Housing Committee, and so it's not very, it's not laser-focused with a certain grouping on that committee. We've tried to expand that a bit. So thank you for that insight. Other questions or comments? You know, from my perspective, I feel very much the same, is that we continue to refine that and look, it is doing us, it is doing us well at the present time. You know, we just need to make some headway when it comes to affordable housing and enticing builders to step up a little bit and help us in that arena. You know, I know the housing inventory right now, I took an opportunity on, I think it was Saturday or Sunday, to drive through the Baker Creek development and then all throughout that area. And, you know, they are now moving dirt over on Hill Road and Baker Creek, getting ready for Phase, I think it's Phase Three, where that commercial spot is. So they're making substantial headway there. Homes are going up very quickly. Heather, how many permits do we have going right now? I know I'm pulling that from, you're not prepared possibly to do that, but what are we looking from a permit standpoint on that North Baker Creek parcel?
Right now, they appear to be submitting about eight permits a week, and so we're working through that process with them. We expect it to slow down a little bit in the winter, but they have been averaging, we have been seeing about 30 permits a month through the process.
And compared to times past, that is, that's monumental, more residential permits than we've seen in a long time, isn't it?
Yes, actually, that is a quicker pace than what we have seen in the past, because we have been permitting somewhere between 100 and 150 in some years. We've had the 250 in there as well, depending if we have multifamily units. But it will probably slow down as they get into their larger lots, which will be more What I did share with you is that the people who have taken advantage of the exceptions are the nonprofit builders. They are the ones, the private side. We've talked to a lot of private side developers. Interestingly, from Sam's presentation, we have had several private home builders who want to build ADUs in their backyard for a family member experiencing disability. And so we've talked to them about these exemptions for those projects, but they haven't moved forward with them. I'm not sure why. I feel like I should call them and do exit interviews and find out, you know, is this a compelling program for them or not? But we have, through this program, done 30 homes with community home builders who have been in this program and 10 homes with MAC Habitat.
What effect would this have on the Aspire development? Is that outside of the city limit? Is that in the county?
No, so that's the MAC Habitat development, and they are participating in this program. So it brings down the cost of those homes as well for the people moving into them.
Great, yeah. I saw Vicky on the call or in our meeting here, and that just, so again, I'll just ask from a council perspective, any comments, any thoughts to share? Go ahead, Zach.
Thank you. Got to get this thing closed. Thank you, and thanks for the presentation. Interesting, so just, how does the process work for, like, I've just come in with my development? I don't know if you approach them and say, this is an available option, if you want to achieve this, or if they bring it to you and know about it? And then how does it work on that large scale of sort of, is it easy or is it a cumbersome process? And I don't know, again, maybe you alluded to not knowing how it's perceived with that exit interview comment, but, and that's a really small scale and kind of a fringe project. But as a whole, how are you finding the process for going about and achieving the exemptions?
Yeah, so probably what we're not doing very well is marketing it. We don't actively market it. Most people who we're visiting with, when we're talking about projects, are always, always, you know, one of the first questions is, do you have any grants? Do you have any waivers? You know, they're, how to bring down the cost of the project. So we, all the staff are aware of the program and provide them the information. There is no application process for it. What they need to do is show that they can income-certify their project, and the housing authority has agreed to do that for private developers. So they would go to the housing authority. The housing authority has a process of certification. They would do that, write us a letter saying that this, the household that would be using this project is income-certified under our standards. And then we work through what the, we put together the certificate of exemption, which acts like a contract as well, and then we record that on the property. So it's actually, for our processes, it's actually one of the easiest.
I was just going to say, that sounds, whoa, you sure thought I didn't know you were done? No, that sounds great. And, sorry, the question lost me. I went for the joke instead. I think it was more about, oh, I got it. As people come into our, sort of, as you alluded to, the, well, what do you got? What do you got? I'll build that. What can I, what programs do you have? Are there, are there actually specific other things like, hey, do you have any exemptions for this type of program? Do you have any things that we don't do that would be good for the community that we're missing and can offer as part of this? I mean, the code right there allows us three 10060 SDC exemptions on projects where we could put our thumb on the scale, and affordable housing, 100%, I'm right behind it. But are we seeing any other projects out there that we'd like to bring in, that we could, that we could expand this exemption program to include other programs, not just affordable housing, or expand it to grow that scope?
We have not had discussion about expanding what type qualifying projects for SDC exemptions. We have had, if that's what your question was, if, the question was, are there other types of projects and programs that can incentivize affordable housing and help bring down the cost of it? We do have a long list of those that has been put together by our Housing Project Advisory Committee in 2018, 2020 as our draft housing strategy, and it's something that we'll be working on. Sam Goldblard talked a little bit about that housing production strategy that we have to do for House Bill 2003. It's going to require us as a city to have programs like this to incentivize affordable housing. There is already a draft list that has been put together by Project Advisory Committee for you as a recommendation. We've been waiting for this state to finish their rulemaking for House Bill 2003 so we can reconcile it against that and then bring that forward. I think Kelly participated on that and some other members of council participated.
Well, on that, answer the second question, yeah, I mean, that list more is more, and the more we can do, the better if it opens that up. So yeah, the better product that can come to us that we could thumbs up would be cool. And then, I guess, the answer to the first question, it was a two-pronged question. Are there other things we are doing non-affordable housing related? Are there other things we aren't doing that we could be for SDC exemptions?
So we haven't, we haven't had that discussion. SDC exemptions are, SDCs are fairly, are highly regulated, because it's, you know, a financial impact on developers by state law, and exceptions are frowned upon for the most part, but that's something we could be talking about with consultants as we put together these public facility plan updates, because SDC methodologies will probably be part of them. And we can have that discussion as to what other types of things can we exempt and see if that's something the city wants to do.
Okay, and then there's sort of two types, right? There's sort of a, well, I guess, there's only one type. You just determine how long you want to do it, if you want to do a one-year, a two-year program, or a five-year thing, or just an indefinite, and we'll just keep reviewing it? Is that, there's either time-capped ones or indefinite, and we just put it on our work plan to review it?
Yeah, so typically, it typically, exceptions are indefinite, because you're calculating into your methodology. So for instance, if the city chooses to do full cost recovery on SDCs, then you need to calculate in what you're offsetting, right, into that calculation of full cost recovery. But we elected to do this as a pilot program with a five-year review, because we already had the methodology in place. This had not been anticipated in that methodology, and we wanted to be able to monitor, administer it, and make decisions accordingly.
Okay, well, thanks for those. I think I've taken us way down the rabbit hole on SDC nuance. Just an interesting tool in the toolkit. I think I overall support the program and continuing it, and I think it's a great, and hope we can do more to offer it. And then I'll just keep that in mind, that section of the code in mind as we go forward for other projects. Thanks.
Thank you, Zach. Remy?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Heather, for the presentation and the recap. So I mean, I think, you know, I didn't hear a lot of calls for conversation in the very first calls from the mayor, and so I don't want to skip ahead of anybody's discussion, but I am eager to recommend that we continue this program and follow the recommendation of the McMinnville Affordable Housing Commission. As you said in your presentation, and, I mean, you said the year span, but this was a 20-year practice of the city of McMinnville before it was formalized five years ago. So we're 25 years into this practice. There seem to be benefits to the community, and I certainly would be in support of continuing it, and certainly calling for another evaluation of the program within a few years. But I think an annual review would be a bit hefty for both staff. I'm sorry, my dog hates it when I'm actually staring the computer, so I'm sorry if you can hear him in the background. He's very jealous. But, but I would like to continue it for, I would like to say that we have a two, three, or five-year marker that we put on this to reevaluate, just given the longevity of the program, how it's worked for McMinnville, but also being mindful of the fact that we have had both an uptick in affordable housing projects, and then, of course, extreme budget complications beyond what any of us could have anticipated. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. Again, I'll call for any last comments on this presentation. Adam, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo Zach and Remy that it'd be open to expanding it if the opportunity were to arise. And also it'd be in favor of moving it forward to another five years with everything else going on. And in the city, I don't want to burden staff with an annual or biannual review of this program if staff sees projects come about, but they would like to see...
Looks like we lost Adam's audio. Okay.
Mayor, I'm Mr. Mayor.
Okay, you're back now. Go ahead, finish up. Adam?
Not sure where you lost me, but I was just reiterating that I'd like to see it stick with a five-year, five-year review and not burden staff with a annual or every other year review.
Okay.
See the project come about that, you know, they wish that it would have been expanded to accommodate. And I don't mind reviewing it sooner, but I think as far as the standing benchmark, five years is a reasonable timeframe to review it again.
Thank you, Adam. Again, I'll call for any comments.
Mayor, I think the city manager has his hand up.
Oh, Jeff. Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. One possibility that may be a sort of a friendly amendment to the conversation we heard, and we, from a staff perspective, we really appreciate the sensitive sensitivity to workload. Because we will be reviewing each of our SDC methodologies as we finish their respective master plans, we could incorporate an assessment of the impact of this incentive on each individual SDC as we bring that package forward. I think that would probably only have a marginal impact on the work for each of those SDC areas. And so it may be that instead of doing a full SDC assessment in three years or five years, you might see three or four separate by SDC type assessments over the next three to four years, if that makes sense to you. That's just an option to consider.
Yeah, I think, I think that makes great sense. If we're delving into the work, adding a little piece to it as we delve into it, it's much easier. Remy?
Thank you. I appreciate that approach, and I have some concern that we might pick apart the program. So could you just address that in terms of how we would still be viewing it holistically if we took that approach? And making sure that, you know, whichever SDC it is that we review last isn't the, well, we've already kind of given away all of our SDC, you know, availability slots, so this one, you know, do you hear my concern, Mr. Towery? Do you mind addressing it? Thank you.
I do, and I think the approach that I would probably suggest, and we'd have to talk through it a little bit more, is sort of barely an idea in my skull at this point, is that, you know, each of those capital plans has different needs and different anticipated time for making those system improvements. And, you know, the, the impact on the park system may be different than the impact on the sewer system, depending on what our particular needs are and what other funding sources we might be able to bring to bear to support infrastructure. So I think we would keep in mind that we don't want to take an approach that would, that would diminish the program sort of incrementally or accidentally, but I think we can also identify sort of the, you know, by system impacts of the program and be able to give you some good information that would inform your policy discussions. And ultimately, you may not take any particular action until you see the cumulative recommendations. That's another option.
So that would be that we could kind of be getting these updates as we go along, so we can be evaluating them individually, which we have done in the past. Initially, parks was included in the SDC exemption that was presented on affordable housing, and it was Parks and Rec that came back and said, our, our budget really can't sustain this. And so that revision then happened to include parks as still an entity that was collecting SDCs. So what you're saying is we could review them initially, but then continue this program and only recommend changes once we've kind of heard from all departments affected?
Yes, that would be a good option.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I just hate the idea of parsing it each time and looking at it and trying to come up with a decision. It bothers me, just as it did Remy's. So I'd prefer to get to the end of it and then kind of come up with a decision.
So the Affordable Housing Committee's recommendation to you is kind of an aggregate of all your discussion right now, which is to continue utilizing the program as is, remove the deadline out of the code, and then with the public facility planning update, evaluate the impact of the exceptions on the new public facility plans, and then bring that back to City Council as a collective case for evaluation.
Yeah, just leave it as stated originally.
Thank you for the discussion. So Heather, you've gotten enough direction from us this evening, and we know that we'll have some further discussion on it, but great presentation and good dialogue. Thank you. Let's move to advice and information, reports from councilors on committee assignments. And so I'll go ahead and start with Kelly first tonight.
I should have stayed unmuted. Okay. Let me see if I can actually get my phone to work. It's not working well. Most of my report involves Visit McMinnville. Most of you, I think, have received the email, but I'll just hit a few high points here. Visit McMinnville hosted four regional and national media guests for unique experiences in Oregon wine country. We're collaborating with Public Art Committee. We've hired top artists to install a mural in downtown McMinnville. And I think I mentioned that last time. They're creating new video and photo assets highlighting dining and welcoming business in McMinnville. We're beginning to target consumer audiences, planning fall and winter McMinnville visits, showcasing, advertising via print, video, digital, out-of-home billboards, and podcasts. These ads are highly striking pieces that will bring brand to where it is and highlight safe and aspirational McMinnville activities. I think it's safe to mention at this point that we have gone to a different advertiser for Visit McMinnville. Visit McMinnville is also collaborating with Travel Oregon to share Kind People Are Our Kind of People campaign. This is an effort to help, you know, waiters and other line people that are dealing with the COVID difficulties, with the hope that everybody will be a little more civil to each other. There's been some kind of notable issues on that. And, oh yeah, here we go. McMinnville is now with Volta Electric Vehicle, oh, they have their signs and their advertisements on the Volta Electric Vehicle charging stations in Portland and Seattle areas. So good work there. We did not have an August meeting for the YCAP. However, as of September 1st, they were up and running with their turnkey operation, and we have three prospective sites that we're going to be looking at for the navigation center. A lot of enthusiasm in the whole process of that. And they also are put out bids for audits within the last week.
Thank you, Kelly. Let's move over to Sal.
Thank you, Mayor. Very brief report today. Council of Governments had our executive committee meeting today. The main item of business is planning the five sessions that we're doing, dealing with kind of major issues that we're trying to address here in the Willamette Valley. The first of those meetings is going to be on the 21st. I believe it's at 3 o'clock. That will be held via Zoom, and it's going to be on homelessness. The Marion and Polk Homeless Alliance are going to be giving a report on both homelessness as well as a legislative report for priorities for the 2022 legislative session. And the next four sessions that we'll do will deal with housing, water, resiliency, and I think I'm missing one, but, oh, transportation. And so hopefully people will get an invitation tomorrow, all the members of the city council, and I believe the city manager and some of the senior staff at our city and other cities. And hopefully people will be able to attend that first meeting on September 21st. And our regular meeting for Council of Governments will also be on the 21st after that presentation. Thanks.
Thank you, Sal. Let's move to Zach.
There we go. Thank you very much. MAC PAC, we had no September meeting for the first week. We'll be meeting again in whatever month comes after September, October. And Landscape Review Committee, we're meeting tomorrow, and we've got a street tree removal on the agenda, as well as a landscape plan review for a project next to the post office. That's the agenda there. And then as well, looks like I'm in meetings all day tomorrow. I've got the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities Rulemaking Advisory Committee, and that's the eighth meeting there. We're getting into some meaty stuff on that. That's my update. Thanks.
Thank you, Zach. Let's go to Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. EVLC meeting, our group met on the 8th. Basically, we kind of recovered the, some questions that might have, that were kind of touched on by some of the city councilors regarding the Innovation Center. You know, it's 140 contiguous acres represents one of the largest available acreages in the state of Oregon that zone for office and industrial use. This opportunity provides us the ability to lead the discussion rather than to follow it and to shape it after the developers already own the property. If we don't lead this as a city, someone else will make this, make their own destiny on these properties. We are currently not prepared for an opportunity that would fit there, and that's what this proposal would have done, will do rather. The vision of the Innovation Center, because it's kind of nebulous, is a place where you have both established and growing businesses that can all interact with each other and are stimulating each other's research and development. Jody Christensen mentioned a couple examples of the current problems that this would address. A well-known search engine was looking for a data center location, and we did not know the infrastructure capacity for the site and its capabilities. We knew a minimum, but we didn't know the maximum, and that's what we need to find out. There was a product in the, in the industrial district that was underserved on the broadband side, excuse me, a company, rather. They were going to leave without more capacity. Again, we were unable to discuss the potential of a Highway 18 location because we didn't know the capacity. Heather Merschner's mentioned this is a feasibility study for public infrastructure that needs to be put in the ground and brought to the site to support the type of higher intensity job development and innovation that we are envisioning in that area. This project is looking to provide 20 to 25 employees per acre as opposed to the 7 and 9 per acre that traditional industrial zoning, because it would have an overlay that will allow business development in addition to manufacturing. Some of what will be covered in that proposal is water capacity, broadband, just the public infrastructure
Chris?
capacity and water capacity.
Chris, instead of advocating for things, we just need to report and...
I'm done.
Okay. Anything else from meetings that you've been involved in?
Nope, there was no other meetings to report on.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Remy.
Mr. Mayor, so the DEI Advisory Committee met this week, and we've continued having updates from department heads this week. This past month, we met with Director Richards from the Planning Department, who really shined a light on a lot of policies within the city of McMinnville that we're aware of, that have some of the fallibility that we heard about tonight in our presentation from the Fair Housing Council. And of course, everybody was also anticipating that training with the Fair Housing Council that happened earlier this evening. I don't have very much to report tonight, so I won't take all of my three minutes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Remy. Let's go to Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Airport Commission meeting got canceled, as well as the YCOM meetings. Fire District, the AMIT board met last night and voted 4 to 1 to join us moving forward to the next phase of that. So that deadline that the consultant had was tomorrow, so hopefully by our next council meeting, we'll know who our partners are to move forward to the next phase, and possibly even Keith Hanniven can enlighten us on anything else she knows about that tonight.
Thank you, Adam. I'll just report. This coming Thursday, we have the Newburgh Dundee Bypass Committee meeting, and we're going to hear some updates from ODOT on the design work, a much greater discussion around design work on Phase 2. I had an opportunity last week for the week to be involved in the Northwest Public Power Association Annual Meeting and Board Meeting, and we talked about supporting, you know, electric from Bonneville Administration. There's advocates out there that would take that away from the government and try to make that a corporation, and we are so against that because then you lose control in bringing safe power to the western region. So I'll kind of leave that there. Let's go to department heads. Claudia, do we have anyone at the Civic Center to report?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Amanda, let's go with you first.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Heather?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report.
Let's go with Jennifer.
And thank you. It is a streak. Nothing to report. Thanks.
Thank you. Kylie?
I'm gonna break that streak. Just a couple updates for you all. First off, I'm sure many of you have heard about the proposed OSHA rule that's coming from our federal government. We're all kind of anxiously awaiting that, so I just want the council to know that as we learn information about our own compliance requirements, that we'll provide an update to you all on how we intend to meet those. The rule hasn't been published yet, so we're just waiting. Next, we've got our classification appeals process going on. That should wrap up here, middle to the middle toward end of October, and then we're forming an internal team to craft our implementation strategy. You know, as you all know, our budget's been a little tight, and we've had some changes in the last year, so we need to evaluate how we can implement the recommendations from our consultant on that. So more to come on the classification project, but the appeals process is underway and is going pretty well. And then just a reminder, we've got our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee presentation next week. They're excited to share with you their work plan, and hopefully you'll have some time to review that before the presentation. But the committee themselves, they're very excited to present with you all. And then just a recruitment update, we are in process with our Public Works Director recruitment and completed some of our interviews on that today. So hopefully in the coming weeks, we will have an update for you all about a new Public Works Director, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kylie. Let's go to Jenny.
I think she's off the call now, Mayor.
Okay, let's go to Susan.
Well, Kylie wasn't gonna break it. I was, because I do have a few updates. So the senior center is open, 9 to noon, Monday through Thursday. We were really excited to get that open. I know not all senior centers across the state have reopened yet because of the pandemic, but if anybody's interested in taking yoga or doing some of our other normal classes out there, quilting, Better Bones and Ballast Watercolor, we've got those up and running in there. Appointment only, so people need to register ahead of time. Another update is we are still continuing to have a really difficult time hiring staff, and this is across the community. We're working with Campfire, as you know, to transition KOB to the Campfire program, and they are having challenges as well. We've been working with the McMinnville School District to... with the McMinnville School District to see how we can serve as many families as possible through that. And due to a shortage of bus drivers, we're unable to get all of the students together at one location. So we're trying to be really creative and appreciate the community's patience on that. And Campfire is going to come introduce themselves to you on the 28th, I believe, just to let you know a little bit about them and introduce themselves. Good news, Saturday, our fall soccer starts, and we have 600 families participating in that. Normally, we're at about 700 to 800, so we feel good about that. But again, staffing is a challenge for that as well. So still up and running and moving forward in Parks and Rec, and excited to see the community.
Thank you, Susan.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Can I follow up real quick to the KOB portion of that? Having, was on, I think, with Councillor Garvin, I was on the KOB TAC. And since then, through a global pandemic, Susan and I have kind of worked often on that project, even meeting so frequently as weekly on that. And I just want to say that the future of KOB is looking really good, and it is to Susan's extremely, extremely hard work and resolve, and at points, pushing a rope was how much effort it took to get some of that done. And I think taking it from what program it was and now to Campfire, and as we get through this transition of COVID and a new program, it's going to be fantastic. And the kids of our community are going to be really well taken care of, and it's a large part because of Susan's hard work. So I just want everyone to know that.
Here, here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy, are you representing Fire tonight?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. As Councillor Garvin talked about just a few minutes ago, we are kind of in the final approach of the timeline where the partners who might be moving forward with us in the consolidation efforts would need to make that decision. So we should know by next meeting what that looks like for sure. We also are in a space where we're working through the vaccination mandates that have come out for health care providers, working hard with Kylie to make sure that we're intentional about what it looks like to review any exemptions that might come in and to ensure that we're taking care of the organization the best that we can.
Thank you, Amy, for that report. Chief Skels, Matt?
Yep, I'm here. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. So a couple things to note, and our Park Ranger program is starting to wind down a little bit. We've got one ranger left. One's gone back to Lynnfield College or Lynnfield University. The other PJ's been hired by the Sheriff's Office as a patrol deputy. So sort of winding down with that program. Secondly, our SROs have started their school assignments. Officer Surt is over at the middle schools, and Officer Preston is working in the high school. One thing I'd like to touch on real quick, and it's really because I know the council, and I know Mr. Towery also gets repeated emails from constituents about homeless camps and what we're doing during COVID, like to hopefully dispel some misinformation that may be out there as it relates to camps with COVID. And secondly, Turtle Doves, because I do know that there's some information, or at least communications going around that the police department is taking Turtle Dove. As you recall, those are the portable pods that have been manufactured by local builders. So long story short, I'll just reiterate, with respect to the Newsweek story article that was published about our notification to a camp that had COVID, I'd like to say that at no time did our officers go down there either previously or during that contact and were they made aware of any COVID outbreak. We did learn after the fact that they had been down there, where they had posted a 72-hour notice that the Health Department and encompassing Hill Valley were aware of that. Since that time, my communication is obviously was, I was frustrated with the fact that there was a known or believed to be outbreak at the time, and we were not looped into that. And since that time, I reiterated my request, and my frustration, I think, was heard loudly that if those particular organizations are aware of those types of an outbreak, please loop us in so we can loop our city staff, as well as, besides the PD, I know the Fire Department, Code Compliance works a great deal with this particular population. But I want to let you know that we are not out there seeking and moving camps around. We are very cognizant of trying to contain an issue. I'd be happy to answer questions about that later on. And secondly, with respect to Turtle Dove, the pods, you know, there's information that we're going around and taking pods, and we're targeting pods specifically. I checked with our evidence. Right now, we've got a total of three pods and evidence, and we're trying to get them back to their owners as soon as we get a release from municipal court. But I'd also like, more importantly, to just point out that our staff, when we find abandoned pods, we are actually contacting the manufacturer and getting them back to them so they can refurbish them and then reissue them or hand them back out. So we do not take pods. We do not destroy pods. The only pods that we take, have been taken is evidence. And again, we're trying to work expeditiously with the court to get those back to the owners so they can have those to use. But the information or some, or communication that's going around is, I would say, is not complete, to say the least. With respect to our complaints about camping, I want to reiterate, our officers are not out looking to enforce this. Outside of maybe Dust and Court, Marsh Lane, those areas that have been historically, we say up in the industrial Rivergate area where there were some issues within camp. It's a couple years ago. These are complaint-driven type of calls, where we're getting calls from neighbors, citizens about issues within the neighborhood. So we do provide warnings. We provide countless warnings, and we provide 72-hours notice before we can go into a camp and ask them to move. And we're currently working with Code Compliance with a particular problem or property that may have a camp. But I wanted to say, we're being as tactful as possible in these, and I know they're difficult situations, and they're sometimes heated from different factions of the city, depending upon what side of the court you land on, maybe. But again, we are responding to complaints. We're not going out and taking and moving people just for the heck of it. We're actually responding to complaints that are coming in from the citizenry. So I just wanted to clear that up, and I hope I answered some of your questions. And again, my request is if you are getting these, this information, you can direct them to me, and I'd be happy to communicate emails to these folks. Meetings about this are difficult. Sometimes I don't have enough time, but I can certainly respond via email if you get emails from your constituents. I just want to clarify the record.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you for your preparation and making this, this report this evening. I know council leadership has asked just to keep us much more abreast of what really is happening, because we see social media going many different directions, and we can't count on the stories that come out of social media to be complete. And so it helps council just be well-grounded in the things that we are doing. So thank you from that perspective. I'm going to, Leland, anything from wastewater? I see that you're on the line, and with Mike being gone, anything from wastewater that you'd like to share?
Mayor, councillors, this evening, the only thing I would share is that I've started to reach out to Deb Glardy in getting our financial plan, at least for the future wage, or now wage, but fee increases that may take place this next year to get that ball rolling. So we have the data and information, and also the update with some of the lost revenue that we are experiencing with the loss of our creamery in town.
Thank you.
All I have at the moment.
Thank you, Leland. And then let's end up with Jeff. Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor. A few items to report. First, an apology to the mayor. I'm going to have to clarify some of the information he provided at the beginning of the meeting, but that's because we had a little bit of a course correction since we last met. The packet that you got from the Finance Director is only about the revenue options. Because you do have the presentation from the DEI Advisory Committee at your work session next week, both the revenue options and the core services packets are weighty, and we want to be able to give you enough time to get through them and ask the questions that you have. So you'll have an hour with the DEI Committee next week and an hour to talk about the revenue options packet that Jennifer sent you. We actually have a pretty light regular agenda for the 28th, and so we'll, in a few days, will be sending out that core services packet, and that will be discussed on the 28th of September. So apologies for that lack of clarity for the mayor. I'm only surprised about the change to report, and that I expected that he would report on the delegation he led to Columbus, Ohio last weekend. Go Ducks! We have all but finished our furlough program. We have a small handful of employees who are kind of wrapping up to hit their target here in the first part of September. And after we have wrapped that up, we'll spend some time analyzing the impacts. Just to remind you, we expected that the furlough program would have about a $650,000 positive budget impact. I'm confident that we will have hit, if not exceeded, that target. Most folks did hit their target by the first week of September, but we'll give you a detailed report once the data and information are in. I do not foresee the need for additional mandatory furloughs throughout the course of this coming year, however. So just letting you know, I think that we are done with that, but we'll do a wrap-up. And then finally, I'll be taking Friday and Monday, Friday of this week and Monday of next week off on a long weekend vacation. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Jeff. Let's move on to the consent agenda. This evening, we have six items on the consent agenda. Is there any councillor that would like to take anything off the consent agenda this evening and move it as a specific item? Seeing none, then I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as it stands. Second, so I've got Zach, and I've got Sal. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Good. Any opposed? So consent agenda this evening passes with a vote of six to zero. That takes care of our regular meeting this evening, and so we'll go ahead and adjourn the regular meeting. We're going to move into executive session immediately following this meeting. We have a number of items that we need to go over. So I'm going to ask Claudia, do we stay on this line, or do we go to a separate call for?